Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Manager, what do we have today?
Morning, Chairman and Commission. We have a few items this morning. We'll go as long as we can. First off, we have a... The fire chief is here and also some sheriff, 911, and EMS support staff to kind of just brief you on the Textron explosion that happened over the holiday period. They have not done their after-action meeting on it yet, but they have enough information to give you a high-level summary. And then, the sheriff, while he's here, is going to talk about the Mental Health Coalition and give you a brief update on where that coalition group is at and maybe what the next steps are. Thirdly, Justin Wagner's going to talk about the tax abatement policy, which is on the agenda for tomorrow, to have any last-minute discussion on that and to see if we want to continue to push that forward or modify it slightly. And then, if we have time, Valerie's here to talk about Northeast Sedgwick County Park. We have the appraisal numbers in for that site, and we also have appraisal numbers in for the Lake Afton site to see if there's a potential for some switching of designation there. And then Kate has just a very brief discussion about the legislative schedule for the week, including tonight and Thursday.
Why don't we switch the last two around, just in case we run out of time, because we need to make sure everybody knows the legislative sessions.
That'll just take a minute, so, okay.
Very good.
So with that, Chief Williams?
Chief Doug Williams, Happy New Year. We got the New Year brought in in a nice fashion. Anyway, on the 27th of December, at 8:00 in the morning, we had dispatch...
(inaudible).
Where am I at?
(inaudible) on the keyboard, maybe?
Okay. This one?
Yep.
Anyway, we...
How do you run?
Okay, how do I make this run?
Why don't you just stay there, Kate?
Thanks a lot. There we go. This is a video most of you have seen. We pulled it off on the news channel from the car dealership across the street and makes you understand the impact and the amount that that explosion occurred. The original call came from 911 at 8:02 a.m. Our first arriving units was Engine 38 that arrived at 8:05. Or, excuse me, they were dispatched at 8:05. The first unit was Engine 38, was on scene at 8:06, and incident command was established by Wichita Battalion 3 at 8:12. Eventually, the command switched over to a unified, what we call Unified Command, where we pulled the department heads. We had medical, we had Dr. Gallagher, we had representatives from emergency management, sheriff, we had everybody in the command van at one time in what we call Unified Command, which is where we bring the leaders of everybody together, and we form more of a command team than just a single command. So, it essentially got there, but it started out with Battalion 3 from Wichita Fire was an original commander, and he was on scene at 8:12. Hazmat was requested at 8:14, and hazmat was on scene at 8:18. I keep wanting to use the mouse. Rescue group was established. One of the things that we... That started in this, when we have an event like this, one of the first things we have to do is isolate, evacuate, and figure out what happened. And a lot of people don't understand, but the original six units that arrived on scene were all assigned to get everybody out and establish a perimeter and keep everybody back and figure out what happened in type of a recon. And so, at 8:20, our First Division Chief, Chief Tracy, got on scene, and he was assigned rescue group coordinator. And at that time, he started doing the recon and building a plan of how we were going to address the rescue in this scenario. Through the whole process of the event, it ran from 8:20. The first media briefing was done at 10:20. That was organized by Kate, with Communications came out and helped us set that up. And I believe the first communications briefing that we had was with Kate, Chief Wagner from the Fire Department, Dr. Gallagher, and I think Commissioner Meichner was at that one. And so, that was the first press release at 10:20. At 11:15, we started breaking down units to return to service. At 11:20, we did the second briefing, which at that time was the one with the Textron. Textron was at the first one also. The second one, we had Chief Wagner, Textron representative, and Sheriff Easter was at the second briefing. So, at 12:30, the Fire Department, MABCD, and the sheriff began the scene investigation. And then at 6:16, we closed the incident, and we had all of our units off the scene at 6:16. Responding units, so that we have listed, were the Wichita Fire, Sedgwick County Fire, EMS, 911 Communications, Emergency Management, Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, Wichita PD, ATF, OSHA, Textron Safety and Textron Engineering, Strategic Communications, and MABCD and the investigation and their engineers and the evaluation of the structure. The incident numbers that we have, that we've put together just quickly off of our CAD data, was eight public safety agencies responded, 31 fire units, 15 patients, 15 vehicles damaged, and that's private vehicles in the parking lot. Four buildings damaged, with 36C being the main building that got damaged. We used five 911 tac channels and operations channel, and we did two media briefings. The other details from the investigation, the cause is still undetermined. The damages we have so far is 20% of Plant 3, and we're still tabulating. We're still working with Textron to get a value cost. We don't have that yet. The autoclave that exploded is an oven that uses nitrogen gas, and they use it and they pressure and they heat treat composites to mold them together. And the autoclave was built in 1984 and was the largest in the state when it was installed. Currently, Spirit has one that's larger, but it's still pretty good size. There's the drone shot, I believe this is from the sheriff's drone, of building... This is Building 36, and the autoclave that exploded was in that main part that's damaged right there. We threw this in there because Chief Tracy was assigned rescue, and we always teach our people to be resourceful. He's using the side of the building for his command board and tracking his... All these are units that he was assigned and how he was tracking the units assigned to him at different times. And so, we just thought that was interesting because he used the side of a building for his command sheet. One of the things we've looked at in this event, we feel that we were very, very lucky in the fact that, of course, this happened during the shutdown period where we had... We didn't have any Textron normal employees there. It was just the maintenance people and some contractors. But also in the luck, you can see a piece of metal went through this building right above the gas line, the main gas line. And had this gas line been hit and breached, it would have been a different event. We would have not only had a... We'd had a fire event besides an explosion. So, we feel lucky in that sense. This is a piece of iron. This is... Is this 10-inch?
10 or 12.
A 10- or 12-inch piece of iron that's 20-foot long, and this is another different building than the one it started in. And it came through the roof of this building and landed in the building over... And once again, we feel fortunate because had this building been... Had workers in it and everything, you know, this may have landed on half a dozen people and injured them or... So, once again, we're... Not only does it show the force of this blast, but it also shows how fortunate we were that they were on a shutdown. This is the autoclave that exploded. This is the inside of that building. And the brown part you're seeing is how far that thing got pushed from the blast. The ring that... Where that brown starts, that ring, was all the way back inside of that white wall right there. So, it was moved that however far that is. And here's where it moved. When they built this, which was probably saved a bunch of lives, and it's not this way everywhere, but when they built this autoclave, they set it in a three- or four-foot-deep pit. So, when it slid, it hit against a pit wall instead of just going across the floor. And you can see where it's... This buildup behind it is the dirt to where it breached that pit wall and just kept shoving like a bulldozer and build up this in front of it. And I thought we had a shot of the floor, but this... There's a 12-inch concrete on top of this dirt that got... And you can... Another picture, well, you can see a chunk of concrete on the other side of that dirt, and it's about that thick. And that concrete got busted up and shoved back too. So, it took the concrete floor and three-foot of pit dirt and everything and moved it. Do you remember how far that was, Rob?
Eight to 12 feet.
Eight to 12 feet. So, it really moved. Here's some exterior damage, the insulation and metal that was blown off, and you can see some of the damage to the contractor vehicles. Right to the right of the building is the nitrogen tanks that they were using in these autocaves that are knocked over and busted up on the ground. There's some metal damage that was thrown against another building. This is, we found, interesting. This is their maintenance building, which is a few hundred feet away. And the other end of that autoclave, we showed you the end that was in the building. The other end that blew out of the building had a bell on it, and that bell weighs 4,000 pounds. And that bell that blew off took out the corner of this building. I'll have that picture in a minute. Here's some more of that building that autoclave was in. And here's the... Where the nitrogen tanks... This tipped over to the right is the bottom of one of the nitrogen tanks. There's the bell. And that bell went through that other building. It's 4,000 pounds, and this was on the end of the autoclave. And it went 436 feet before it hit... After it hit that building, it still went 436 feet and embedded in the dirt right there and kept going on, and it ended up at 634 feet. So, that was the blast of how forceful it was. And here's some personally-owned vehicles that were in the parking lot. That's just a briefing of what all happened out there without digging into all the unit events and things like that.
So, the explosion, I heard it was a three-inch nitrogen line, but it was inside of that autoclave that the explosion was?
We believe so.
So, was it explosive material that went off, or was it pressure?
It was the nitrogen... The nitrogen gas that they use in that autoclave, they heat it up, and nitrogen expands 700 times when it's heated up. And they heat that nitrogen, and they use the pressure of that nitrogen and the heat to compress and mold composites together. Somehow, it makes them mold together better.
So, it was PSI from the heat and the nitrogen?
PSI from the nitrogen, yes.
What blew that thing up?
Yep, just like a huge tire that... My understanding is this was operating between 90 to 120 pounds when at normal operation. So, this isn't 10,000 PSI. This was estimated around 90 PSI when it blew. So, I mean, it's truck tire-type air pressure that did this.
Yeah. But it was 90 PSI and a huge volume?
Yes. Yeah.
A couple of questions. One on the responding units. Do we need to send something out from Sedgwick County to thank all of these other folks for their support?
I think that'd be a good idea. We should do that. You know, one thing... One thing that worked very well for us, Chief Snow and I started a command training with our... All of our chief officers' command training together, and that started in first part of November. And so, every month, each shift of division chiefs, battalion chiefs are meeting and going through scenarios together and working together and building teams. And I think there's no question that that played a... I mean, you had a Wichita Battalion Chief as initial commander. When our division chief showed up, there was not an argument over who was in command or fight over turf or anything. It was, "What do you need?" And he said, "You're a rescue guy. Go figure out the rescue problem." And then it ended up with two deputy chiefs that were in the Unified Command posts together and from one from each department. And it just... Everybody, the Sheriff's Department, the EMS, and Dr. Gallagher, I mean, it was probably one of the cleanest-run scenes I've seen in a long time. It really, really was. And Wichita Fire did an awesome job. Everybody did.
Somehow, we need to recognize all the folks. I don't know if the manager's office can work with Communications, figure out how we can recognize all the folks that participated in that and thank them for the teamwork that was... We enjoyed on this, so I'd appreciate that. Another question I have, it's not for the chief, actually, but there's a lot of damage out there at Textron right now. And what do we do on taxes, honestly, to help them as we move forward? Because this plant is not too usable the way it is right now. We're going to have a briefing here in a little bit on what we do with homesteads, but what do we do about something as large as this when we have a loss?
We'll may talk about that. There'll be some legal issues, and we'll get one more to talk about.
Okay. Very good. Other Commissioners' questions. Commissioner Howard?
First of all, I just want to say thank you for all you guys did. It was impressive to see the response. I think the community really liked to see the coordinated response. Excuse me. I apologize for my throat. I think y'all did a really great job. I just wanted to say that publicly. I do have a question. I see in the slides it says it's undetermined, but clearly, there was a breach of pressure somehow. And I'm curious, this autoclave, if it does use pressure like that, surely there must be some type of pressure... Overpressure safety valve that had to have failed. And I'm just curious if we're going to try to understand that so this can't happen again. I think whatever caused this to happen had to be a failure of some type of a safety device somewhere.
Yeah. In the investigation of the autoclave, the FM Global is an insurance company that Textron uses, and it's a huge corporate-type insurance company. And they're going to oversee the investigation. Obviously, they'll have to bring in some engineering and some people that can do analysis of that type of autoclave to see where the failure was.
Okay. Was there a fire?
No.
There was no fire?
Total air blast of nitrogen.
The only other thing I'd say, just as a kind of a thing, I feel like I... It seemed that was happening in some of the comments. A lot of people don't know what nitrogen is. They don't know if that's the same thing as ammonia or how dangerous is it? And one of the comments that was made was to shelter in place. And I thought nitrogen's an inert gas, you know, it's nearly... Most of the air we have in this room is nitrogen, for example. And so, it'd just be nice for people to know, you know, what is the actual real danger? Once this breach happened, I think the danger was probably over course. You didn't know that at the time. But this is hours later, and they were still talking about potentially sheltering in place. And so, you know, if we have a railcar that goes off the tracks and it's got ammonia, that's a much different type of event than...
Yes.
Than this was. And so, trying to just, you know, I guess, let people know nitrogen's not a dangerous thing. They use it in manufacturing, you know, a number of different ways, but... And I guess I'd also like to ask, are they planning to reuse that autoclave now that this has happened? Are they going to reset that, or what's the plan there?
I can't... I don't have an answer to the autoclave. The discussions we've had with Textron is how they can partition off the damaged part of the building from the rest of the building and get back in operations. Chief Timmons, you know, they commented on the autoclave.
Not on the autoclave yet.
Chief Timmons was one of the lead investigators out there that day.
Good morning, Commissioner Robert Timmons, Sedgwick County Fire District 1. Chief Wagner and myself have had two meetings so far with Textron. Part of the problem, we, in wintertime, they're having to build warm walls because of the sprinkler system requirements of the rest of the building. They can't have wet pipe system exposed in the damaged area, so they're... We're working with them and MABCD on getting demolition permits, reconstruction permits, and they're going to build a series of temporary warm walls so that it will allow the temperature to remain above freezing in the areas where they want to get the plant back up and operating. And Plant 36 is actually three separate buildings. They have 36A, which is where the explosion took place, 36B, which is the center, kind of a narrow, high bay area, and 36...
6B.
Sorry, the far west side of the building was unaffected by the explosion. So, we've basically lost six or eight bays on the northeast corner of the building. And so, but what they have to do is they're working with their engineers, figuring out which column lines they have to move back to that are going to be structurally stable. Also, the investigation's still under investigation because the roof, that whole north wall blew out, and all the roof trusses are still currently laying on top of the autoclave. So, none of us have had a chance to get in and take a look at what exactly happened, at the damage into the autoclave.
I do appreciate the briefing this morning. Thank you for helping us understand this more deeply. Appreciate that.
And to answer your question further on evacuations, one of our early concerns, we knew early on it was nitrogen, which is, you're saying, is an inert gas that's highly... Highly, what is it, 80% of air is nitrogen or something to that effect? So, we knew originally that we didn't have a huge issue with the nitrogen, but our concern with the hazmat and getting our hazmat teams in part of the search was we didn't know if the nitrogen damaged other chemical operations going on in that plant. So, we had to get our hazmat crews in there to evaluate whether any other chemicals that they use in that plant were affected by the blast, so...
Do they have more of these autocaves out there?
Yeah, there's two. In the one picture that's up there...
It looked like there were more of them.
Yeah, that one, that same building, there's two right beside the one that blew up. I believe, I thought you... Yeah, in that picture, you can see two smaller ones off to the left side. Do you know if they have more?
Probably ten of them in the building.
How many?
Eight or 10 of them.
Ten?
And they have more in Plant 1.
Have you had Spirit and S... You know, Spirit and Sessna's other plants and Bombardier do that. There's quite a few of those in the community.
Yeah.
Do we have an update of the people who were injured?
We don't have an update right now. The last we knew, there was only one still in the hospital. Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
The one most serious patient was still in the hospital, the last update we got.
Any other questions? Commissioner Meichner? Yeah, Chief, thanks for the update. As you mentioned, I was there. And I just want to thank you and Chief Snow and the... There was a lot of unknown when I got there and a lot of nervousness, but your people and the whole scene seemed to be really coordinating well, which, from my perspective, I was a little concerned that everybody's on the same page and... But it was very comforting. Stephanie Harder from Textron was... Because we didn't know, there was a lot of nervousness with the Textron organization about the obvious, but I commend the press conference, the first one, because you all did a great job, along with... Dr. Gallagher showed up, and there was a sense of calmness and answers, and the nitrogen thing was explained then as well. And Stephanie did a nice job, and I want to thank Kate and Emily for helping to coordinate that because it just was... I was just there. I was there, but I wasn't asked to do anything and didn't need to do anything, and probably it's best that I didn't say anything because I didn't know anything. You all did the work. So, it was really my compliments, and it's... Because I was pretty nervous about what maybe was going on, but thank you for... And I'll share my thanks to Chief Snow and how that coordinated well. There was a lot of red lights and flashing at that place, I tell you what.
We had a lot of resources there.
Oh, yeah. It was good. So, my compliments and thanks and appreciation.
Okay.
Any other comments? Hey, well, thank you. Again, I'd like to make sure that we recognize all of the different agencies. I hope that each of those agencies internally recognize the people that went above and beyond to make sure that this event was handled as professionally as it was, and that includes 911, Sheriff's Department, EMS, Fire Department, internally within Sedgwick County, anyone. Make sure we recognize our people for what they did.
Okay. Also, we're having a post-incident review tomorrow with all of the departments. We're not doing the full-scale per-unit one. This one's just mainly the key leaders of every department and the key officers that were on the scene from each department, whether it's sheriff or whether it's PD or Wichita Fire, Sedgwick County Fire, 911. I mean, all the agencies have been invited to send their key players that were out there to get together and have an action-after report, you know, to review what went well, what areas were we flawed. And then, after that, we'll expect each department to go back and work with their... All of their boots-on-the-ground people to come up with, you know, what those folks also saw that needs commended and also criticized. So, we have a lot of reviews yet to do, but one of the big ones will be tomorrow afternoon at the RTC, where we're going to bring all the agency's heads and players together.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. You bet. Mr. Manager, sir?
Morning, Chair.
Morning.
Well, I hope everybody had a happy holiday and Happy New Year. Appreciate you letting me come up today and talk a little bit where we're at on the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. As you know, we've been meeting once a month for the past year, on some occasions, more than once a month, putting together bylaws, the board, and then working on the strategic plan. What we ended up doing is compiling a whole lot of information from different arenas. WSU helped compile that information, relate it to Bothner and Bradley, to help us put together the strategic plan. When we look at it, the goal of this is the person in need of care is the center of what we're trying to work on. And then, looking at each one of the entities on how we affect the service that is given to the persons needing care. So, that involves case managers, treatment facilities, housing, insurers, law enforcement, and then also case managers. What we've come up with is a plan of a one-to-three-year plan and then a five-to-10-year plan. One of the first things that we've identified is, is how do we improve the services that we're providing right now with more of our partners involved in those particular services? You know, so we're talking about emergency responders, homelessness, families, self-amits, the court system, hospitals, universities and colleges, is a lot of the folks that we have talked to. What we've looked at is the Community Crisis Center, which is the call center and drop-off, and how we can data-share a lot better with our other partners from the homeless communities, from the treatment, other folks that provide treatment, how we can affect transportation because that's a big issue that we're facing, and then individual plans of care. And so, we've met with numerous individuals from the mental health, not just calm care, but from mental health, from substance abuse folks, and from housing, because all of those have to be working together for us to see any type of gains in what we're trying to do here. We've identified our strategic priorities between 2020 and 2025, and that's access to care is one of the task forces that will be formed. That has to do with transportation, insurance of Medicaid, and primary care to be integrated. The second task force that will be formed will be communication, coordination, collaboration. So, what we're talking about there is soft handoffs, shared databases that is patient-centric, reform the HIPAA laws, because a lot of the issues that we're going to have centers around HIPAA. And some of these folks, you know, are hitting each one of our services, but it's hard to communicate between those services because of the HIPAA laws. And then, of course, individualized care plans. The workforce is a huge problem here, is what we've identified. And so, we need to start looking at a pipeline to bring in more case managers, more psychologists, more psychiatrists, those type of things. So, we need to expand, try to look at expanding those options, if there's a way to, just like they do with a lot of the doctors, when they join a particular entity, a lot of their college loans are paid off. That's not what we're seeing with psychiatrists and psychologists or case managers. And so, looking at and trying to figure out how we can maybe do that so these folks that are homegrown stay here instead of leaving and going to other places. The five priorities that we accomplished was to communicate a plan with summit attendees and broader community, showing priorities and how the coalition plans to address them. We completed that task, assigned task forces, and scheduled first meetings, access to care, coordination, workforce, and funding. We have assigned out those task forces with chairs for each one of those task forces, and we will be meeting here this month with the summit attendees and then talking about where we're at, just like what we're talking about today, and then starting our first meetings with those task forces. We're looking... We've connected with Project Wichita because this was number six on their priority list when they went through their... on their priority list, uh, when they went through their, um, project. And so, we've connected with them, uh, to really start communicating more with the public and the entities that they have partnered with. Uh, we're looking, considering hiring consultant to determine, to determine timeline and budget priorities in the strategic plan, uh, and then continue advocating for, uh, the ICT One program. What we're looking at in the first one to three years is right-sizeing Community Crisis Center, sharing data better, the transportation issue that we face, emergency housing, workforce and pipeline compensation. One of the ways, uh, that we're really looking at trying to, uh, have a better effect is looking at, uh, either where comm care currently exists or some other place in the downtown area, uh, where it's kind of a one-stop shop, where you have other partners that are separated right now and, and everybody's kind of in their own silos and we're starting to break down those silos and people are, are understanding that no one in this group is trying to take over what it is that they do. We want to combine with them and we want to work with them to provide better services. And so, by doing that, if you have a one-stop shop and some of these other entities have representatives, representatives inside the one-stop shops, um, we're able to connect to housing, we're able to connect to other, other type of, uh, entities that can assist us and assist that particular patient. And so, the one-to-three-year plan is trying to figure out how to do that and how to share data better and how to increase our workforce. Years four and five, um, is to have that one-stop shop in place and co-location of services. And I know we've talked a lot about the San Antonio project and, uh, looking at this campus tile-style setting. Um, that is something that is, is still on the radar, but not within the first five years. We have got to figure out how to get everybody working together, get used to working together in one particular location, and then looking at expanding those services at that point. That's what, uh, the board and a lot of the, uh, entities that provided information, um, felt that would be the best, uh, way to start looking at this. What we're going to start measuring is, uh, the reduction in arrests and recidivism and readmissions, uh, capture cost savings from high utilizers, decrease number, um, of mental health and substance abuse problems, uh, within the community and within the jail. And so, that's just kind of a brief overview of, uh, what the work has been done in the last year. Uh, we still have Jen Wilson, uh, with comm care that's, uh, still the representative there. Wendy Hummel took another position within the Sheriff's Office. Uh, and so, we're going to start advertising for the substance abuse coordinator, uh, here shortly.
Very good. Well, thanks for the update. We appreciate it. Uh, as you can tell, if you've looked at our legislative agenda, I, behavioral health is a very topic of everything that we're looking at for support from the legislature. We've been able to work with both the city and, uh, and, uh, the chamber and REEP, uh, to add that to all of their legislative agendas. So, uh, we have a joint statement, uh, that says that there are three priorities and behavioral health is the first priority for all three of them. So, uh, I, I think we're moving in the right direction. I know that it's going to take time to get where you want to go and where we want to go. But first of all, I want to thank you personally because you're the one that, uh, about three years ago when I first came on the commission that started opening my eyes to what's going on and, and now that you're opening the eyes to the rest of the commission, uh, the community. And I, I applaud what you've done and what you're trying to do in the future.
I appreciate that. One of the things that I'll add there is, is that what we've been hearing from the legislators for three years, when we've been up there every year talking to them, what's your plan? Uh, we have a plan now, so we'll see if the tune changes a little bit, uh, this year with what they will hopefully try to help, uh, Sedgwick County and actually the rest of the state out with, uh, these issues that have been going on for several years.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much. I, I thoroughly enjoyed the conversation a couple of weeks ago when I, I just got put on this coalition. So, I'm very excited after asking for months and months. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
But one thing that I just want to point out is that, you know, if we have conversations in the community, um, my councilperson, Cindy Claycombe, is kind of keeping me up to breast, you know, up to speed with, with what's happened. I know that there were some conversations regarding open door and, um, some of our homeless population and the issues that are kind of going down there. Um, so, I just want, I want for commissioners to keep me abreast with the meetings that you have. Um, so that way I can be in the loop if you guys are having meetings since I'm kind of knee-deep in this. So, I would really appreciate that. Um, the other thing is, I think it's important for us to work with our business leaders here, um, as commissioners to understand what the private sector can bring to this, uh, because, you know, I think that's the access to care part and funding when we talk about that. So, you know, I've already had a couple of conversations with the business community and, and understanding. And I think that there is a real understanding of the need. Um, and so, to put their money where their mouth is maybe, you know, to be so frank. So, I think it's important that we, you know, we utilize our, our contacts and make sure that we, we bring everybody in. And I know that we're doing that, but I just want to say it out loud.
And we appreciate the fact that you, I don't know if you volunteered or told, uh, to be on the, to be on the board.
I've all tirelessly asked to be on it.
Okay, there you go. So, we appreciate that. One of the things, Commissioner Gary Schmidt within Trust, uh, is putting together some other information, uh, kind of from the business community, those type of things, uh, some asks that we're, are gonna, uh, go out there, uh, with Tammy Bradley and they're gonna want to set up, uh, two of you at a time or one-on-one with you to kind of, uh, discuss further where we're at in this process.
Commissioner Meister.
Thanks, Sheriff. I, um, I'm just curious. Thanks for the, the timeline and, and everything. It's, it's helpful to, to know. Sounds like progress.
I believe we've made some progress.
I mean, in the first.
Not as quick as sometimes we always want.
I, I'm just glad you're making progress. Those first meetings were like, I'm watching going, oh, boy. But, anyway, um, uh, two, two questions. One is the, um, you talked about the, uh, a, a location or a space or, and that's probably three, four years down the road to try to do a mini, uh, San Antonio model or whatever the end result is. But you're saying, so you got to get them all communicating and working together. So, how are they, are they doing that in a single location or is it virtual?
Comm care. Um, Joan and Tim, I think Tim's here, yeah. Um, they're very integral in all of that type of stuff. I mean, I guess I was asked to come talk about this because I'm the board chair, but, uh, it's really comm care and SAC, uh, Via Christi, um, Humankind, Open Door. All those folks are really starting to, uh, mesh together and talk about different ideas on how to collate, co-locate some services, uh, those type of things. Because what we find is, um, comm care does a great job on the mental health aspect of it, uh, but sometimes there's a breakdown on where, what other service we need to send these folks to. Um, and housing's a big one.
Right. So, comm care's kind of the center spoke of the.
Yes, they are.
And you feel like these other groups are kind of coming on board and communicating, trying at least?
Yeah, that, you know, there was a lot of apprehension in the beginning.
Sure.
Because I just felt that this was just another nonprofit that was going to come in here and take money from them and, um, try to take away their business and those type of things. I think, uh, over the course of this last year, we've been able to break down a lot of those barriers and, and they understand that's not what we're here for.
Thank you. The, uh, second question, so thanks for talking, you broke down a lot of stuff, but you also said the continued support of the ICT One project.
Mm-hmm.
Can I put you on the spot and ask somebody, where are we at to, are we redoing that yet? Is it up and going now?
ICT One stood up before Christmas.
Oh, it did?
So, they are, yeah, they're functional.
Okay.
And they're, they're doing what they're doing. They're collecting data.
Okay.
I think Chief Snow was supposed to present to the commission, or the city council, maybe this week. I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
They're up and running.
Other questions?
Just have one.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Appreciate, uh, Commissioner Meister's questions. I was just going to ask some of the same things, but only other question I have, you were talking, you were talking kind of quickly on some of the things you're doing. I was trying to write it down. Can you please talk about the measurements you're going to take or the things you're going to track as we implement some of these ideas?
Yeah, what we, uh, uh, came up with was the reduce, reduction in arrests, uh, recidivism and readmissions. So, the folks that do get arrested that have mental health, uh, problems, uh, that we don't see them, um, recitivize, uh, instead are getting on some good care plans, those type of things. Readmissions, the same type of concept, uh, that they're constantly in re-admitted to, uh, comm care. Uh, and, you know, the ICT One really showed, the, the one thing I was real impressed with was, is the amount of times that they left people in place and, uh, put them on care plans instead of, like the old days, well, I don't know what to do with them, so we'll just arrest them for some minor type of crime and bring them into custody. So, those are the three things that we'll track there. Capture cost savings from the high utilizers, comm care and Via Christi did the, or Ascension did the, um, high utilizer study. And so, we have really good numbers to track that with. Uh, and then decrease the number of mental health and substance abuse problems within the jail and the community. Uh, that's a more broad, uh, type of concept. You haven't heard us really talk a lot about the, uh, drug aspect of it. Um, that is, it's still a piece of this, but that is a whole problem within itself, uh, that we are looking at more of a education-prevention type aspect to that. Prevention and education, you can't really track. Uh, and so, when we look at that, what we're looking for is, is if we have a reduction in the amount of cases of narcotics being seized, those type of things, a reduction within SAC, uh, which you will not see for a while because part of education is, is to get people into the treatment. So, you could see, if, if we see a skyrocket in the amount of people entering treatment, that's actually a good thing. Um, but at the end of the four or five years, we should start seeing a reduction, uh, in the amount of drug arrests that we're making, the amount of people sitting in jail for drug arrests, those type of things. The last one, you will not see a, a lot of movement on until the fourth or fifth year.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, piggybacking on, uh, Commissioner Hall's question, it looked like you were using notes and I tried to take a bunch of notes. Uh, is there any way we can get a copy of what you?
Yeah, I can send this to you.
All right. Thank you.
During our weekly meetings, I was like, I'm going to talk with each commissioner about how we want to roll this forward publicly, whether it's two, two ones, whether it's en banc with city, whether it's, uh, we need to discuss, um, kind of how we're going to roll this next. So, and then hopefully get you copies of documents, you know, so that you don't have to grumble for notes.
Well, I took a lot of notes and I'm not sure I got all the, the details down when I was taking notes. So, if I could get that. The other, the other question I've got real quick, uh, last night at my, uh, Citizens Advisory Board, we had the people from the census come and brief us on the census. And it got me thinking about some of the people that, that we're talking about here are going to be the hard-to-reach people for the census. Uh, they're the homeless, uh, and so forth. So, I, I don't know exactly if, if, uh, we've got agencies here within Sedgwick County that can help, uh, count all of those people or how that that happens because, uh, I didn't get a good feel last night from the census folks that they had a good grasp of how, how they were going to go capture all of these people that we have that are kind of disenfranchised from the system.
If I'm not mistaken, I think there is a complete count committee that is through Humankind. I think they have, I, I think that is being addressed. I, I'm not going to say that.
They talking to Sedgwick County? Because we're, we have the resources to be able to do that. You know, he was talking last night, we're going to go out at night under the bridges and so forth. And I thought, we have people that do that every single day in Sedgwick County. Why are they going out doing something when they're doing it right now?
Right. That's part of the complete count committee. Yeah. That's a great question and one that we should absolutely follow up on. But I, I, I won't say for 100% that that's being addressed, but I, for some reason, I think that that is, um, that's why they develop those complete count committees to, and, and they, they have structured populations that they target to make sure that they hit.
I just wanted to make sure that Sedgwick County does a lot of stuff.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And why should they duplicate the efforts that we're already putting forward?
Absolutely agree. Yeah.
Uh, just kind of a, a last comment. We will, uh, start looking at rolling out, um, to the media because we've said all along that we need to be updating the citizens and that's mainly through the media. Uh, work with Kate and them, uh, as far as from a website standpoint, from the Sedgwick County website, plus our website, um, since we don't have anything up and running yet, uh, for the coalition. Uh, those are future plans, of course, but, uh, we have not got that far yet. So, we will be rolling out something, uh, through the media, as the manager has said. Uh, I think it would be a good idea to have both the commission and the council members, and we would give a full overview of, you know, the partners that are on the board and those type of things to both entities at the same time.
Very good. Well, again, thank you very much, Sheriff, for what you do. It's exactly in the wheelhouse of what Sedgwick County is supposed to be doing and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll shift gears and talk about the, um, tax abatement policy now, Justin.
Morning, Commissioner. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. A quick slideshow here. This is gonna, as Tom mentioned, this is going to be on your agenda tomorrow morning. Uh, involves KSA 79, 16, 13. Uh, it was enacted in 2013 and amended, uh, last in 2014. And the, the purpose behind that statute was essentially if, if you own a homestead that's destroyed or substantially destroyed, and all the events listed on this slide, uh, county commissioners could grant tax abatement or credit to the owner of that homestead. Uh, we've had, you know, I think since this was enacted, uh, some ambiguity and gray areas that have come up, especially the last probably three or four years on this, whether it's different interpretations because of the statute. There is, there is some vagueness in the statute where it could lend itself to multiple readings. Um, also, you know, this, this slide lists a handful of the other questions. There's probably a few dozen that you could, uh, come up with as you'd read through the statute as to when it does or doesn't apply. And so, that's what, really why, after working with county staff and having talked with, uh, with you on other, uh, tax abatement items, there's a thought that maybe we should flesh out our process a bit, uh, make it, and Kelly Arnold's comment was, you know, more of a streamlined process that when somebody applies, based on how they apply and their application and their criteria, uh, the property would either qualify or not qualify as opposed to having so many gray areas and, and the policy essentially have you as the board of county commissioners kind of lay out the types of things you'd like to approve abatement on, maybe the things you would not, uh, deem appropriate for abatement. And so, the proposed changes, like I was just talking about, more straightforward eligibility analysis, consistency in application, address the foreseeable issues that we may not have encountered yet that are somewhat likely to occur at some point, and then also be consistent with the intent of the statute. In terms of the process, uh, that I, county, other county staff and I went through on this, we certainly engaged the county clerk's office, county treasurer, appraiser, manager's office, finance, division of finance, and then also our office was involved, uh, pretty heavily in coming up with, uh, proposed changes to this. And I think in front of you, what you've got is a copy of the slideshow, of course, a clean copy of the, uh, proposed changes and then also a red line or track, uh, track changes document. I'll go through about half a dozen of the kind of key changes and then maybe see if you have any questions or, or would like any clarification on what's on there. Uh, probably the key, the most, the threshold question is whether it's a homestead, and that question can come up in a number of different ways. Um, this, the, one of the changes would be to amend the definition of homestead to clearly state it would not apply to a landlord with limited exception. Like, let's say there's a duplex and the landlord lives in half of the duplex. Well, then that half they could qualify for tax abatement, uh, but the other half they wouldn't be able to because they don't live in it. It's not part of their homestead. Um, we've had, you know, we've, I think there, you could read the statute to say either way. Um, but I, I do know at least a couple of commissioners, I think both Commissioners Hall and O'Donnell were state legislators at the time, have made comments that their view was that maybe this was, uh, intended more to just apply to a, a true homestead as opposed to maybe how the statute could be read to apply to a homestead, which could be read to include landlords. Um, it certainly could be read either way. Also, um, clarifies that it would have to be the person's primary residence, the way it's worded right now in the draft proposed changes. So, it wouldn't apply to perhaps an heir if the, if the owner may have passed away in the event that caused the, the damage to the property or a subsequent owner. One time we had somebody who bought the property a few months after when there was just dirt and the home had burned down. I mean, that, they're not intended to apply, to, to qualify for relief under the statute. So, that's why that change had been made. Um, the definition of destroyed or substantially destroyed, uh, would, has a sentence added to it that clarify that groundwater intrusion coming up through a basement or foundation would not, uh, qualify for relief. That's consistent with FEMA standards on what a flood event is. Also, that type of damage never really meets the substantially destroyed threshold of 50% of the, the before-damaged value of the structure. It's usually more like 10%. So, if people would apply for that, they'd kind of be set up to be denied. Also, um, one of the other, in, in line with kind of the streamlining of sorts would be that the, the proposed changes would have limited delegation of denial powers, uh, to county, to the county. to the county manager, the county manager's designee. If the application was filed out of time, you have this, until December 20th of the next year, after the, after your homestead is destroyed to apply for relief. And so if you applied two or three years later, which would be outside that timeframe, the manager's office would be able to say, sorry, you don't qualify for relief, this was received too late, as opposed to having to prepare an agenda item, having to have the appraiser's office review all of it, and do that would be a little bit cleaner. Also, if the property was not a homestead, the person checked the box and said they did not live in the property at the time of the disaster, then they wouldn't qualify. Or if foreclosure proceedings have been filed in district court. The reason behind that being that if you grant tax abatement or credit on taxes, it could do some kind of weird things in a, whether it's a regular foreclosure or a property tax foreclosure. And talking with county staff, the thought was that we, those properties probably shouldn't qualify for relief if there's already been a foreclosure petition filed. And one of the other key changes is if there was widespread disaster, that the county could take more time. Traditionally, in this proposed change, there would be a 90-day timeframe from when you come in and apply for it to win the item, within 90 days it would be on the county commission agenda to either approve or deny relief. But if there is a major disaster that was widespread, there may be a lot of people who are applying, and part of your job, that you're tasked with on these items is to look at the tax consequences on multiple taxing subdivisions. And those, those applications may trickle in, so we didn't want it to be raced to the courthouse to turn in your application. Instead, give you and county staff a better chance to evaluate this and have, have an idea, and you could group them together if that would be the situation that presented itself. And similar to that, if you did have kind of a widespread disaster, one thing that's spelled out in these proposed changes is that, let's say, I mean, the county is a big taxing subdivision. You may have a township or a small city that suffered a widespread disaster, this could really impact a large portion of their tax base. And so this would give you the ability, and I believe the statute permits this, the ability to abate taxes, for example, for the county, in the, in terms of looking at our budget analysis, but maybe not to abate that township's or city's taxes, so that they can still function and provide the services that they need to. So it kind of gives you a free hand and it's clarifying that you would have that free hand. Then lastly, and this kind of gets very technical, but there's some clarification and guidance on county staff on how any tax credits could be applied on these properties. Some of that, it's later in the, the draft changes, but it gets very technical on kind of the order and how it could be applied, how it could be applied to future homesteads if your, for example, your house burns down and then you buy another home, how that may work in terms of how the county clerk's office and treasurer's office might be able to process that. Again, these items on tomorrow's agenda, the recommendation is to approve the changes that were summarized today, but certainly you do have, there's a lot of discretion that you have as commissioners to amend this, if you see fit, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Very good. Well, I know that this has come up on our agenda several times in the last couple of years, and there's always some kind of a question. What you've put together may not be perfect yet, but at least we've got better guidance than we had before, where we were trying to make decisions that maybe were great decisions, but weren't based on all the facts. And so that's why we ask you all to put something together. I'm sure that something is going to come up that we didn't think about, and we can always amend this, but we needed something that we could use as our guiding principles and it can always be tweaked. So I appreciate what you've done so far. Any questions from commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I want to say thank you for the summary and a good job on working on this. I think you've done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to anybody who might be listening, this was a result of the Okla tornado in 2012. We tried to, there was a comment made at that time that it wasn't legal for us to abate any type of taxes due to hardship, it wasn't possible. So we, we wanted to give the county commissioners across our state authority to find a way to do that. It wasn't a mandate, it was simply a permission, a permissive law. And with that, I want to just clarify, we don't even have to have a reason to, to do this or not to do this. I mean, so we have, we have to have reason to do it. But if, if any county chose to follow our example here and just didn't want to participate in the program, then there's nothing that compels them to do this in the law.
That's correct, Commissioner Howell. Totally discretionary in whether to-
Totally discretionary. And, and then just as a point, I, I say, you know, we rely on revisers in the State House to help us write these laws. I wrote this pretty much in 2012 and, and there's always unintended, unintended consequences. The cleanup bill they did on 20, the following year, in my opinion, messed this law up, made it worse, actually. And a lot of things we're dealing with right now are a result of what they did in 2014 that I didn't agree with, but I, I think it's great for us to, to make these changes. I'm wondering if we want to, I guess, ask for someone in the State House, it's not legislative platform issue, but I'm just curious, do we have a position on, is there anything in the law that needs to be adjusted that we would want to say that basically this is a cleanup of the bill? Because it's kind of a mess right now, in my opinion.
I mean, at this point, I think that'd be, I, I don't know. I mean, that'd be up to the, up to the five of you as to if you think that change would be necessary. I don't know that it's completely necessary, and I do know that one of, I, I believe Commissioner O'Donnell once made the comment that the thought was that maybe this was drafted to be somewhat open-ended so that each of the counties could decide how to best develop procedures for this. And so, I mean, I, I think that's a, you know, maybe a question for the five of you plus the state legislature, if there's a, if there's viewed as being a need for a change. I don't know how other counties feel about it, or if Mike Papoun has heard anything one way or another, but I think, I think we've had probably, I feel pretty safe to say we've probably had the most applications of any county because the statute originated here, and I think people have been made pretty aware of it. But just a quick search on Google will show other counties have been taking up these items too, so, and we're not, we're not, certainly not the only ones who have considered it.
Well, the intent of the bill was that we are, we recognize, we recognize that, you know, someone who's living in their home is going through a pretty significant hardship in their life, it's a life event, and we wanted to simply, you know, be a little bit accommodating to them when they're going through a hardship. And that's, that was the intent of the bill, but I think it, it has been, it's evolved into something that I think that wasn't intended. So the unintended consequences have, have certainly developed, and so I, I totally agree with what, with what we're doing here today. And then just last, the last thing you, number five, I think it was number five, I'm sorry, number six, we would never re, if someone paid their taxes and then applied for this and got approved, we would not give them a refund, we would simply give them a credit if they have a qualifying property. After that, that credit would sit on their, essentially sit on their account, I assume? We would apply that credit towards their next property tax bill?
That's correct. Yeah, there would never be a refund. It would, if you've, if you've already paid the taxes, then you could qualify for credit for up to the next three years. I mean, it wouldn't exceed the amount of that single year's tax for what you've paid, and then it could apply up to that total amount.
If they never had a homestead after that point, we would just, they would have to just forfeit the credit?
Correct.
Okay. I have no other questions. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from commissioners? All right, Justin, thank you. We'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Chairman, I didn't know. Kelly, did you have anything you wanted, are you okay?
Yeah, we, we had a motion discussion.
Okay.
All right. The last. Whatever. We'll figure it out. Okay, so tonight starts our week-long legislative fun. We've got the legislative dinner and public forum at the City of Wichita City Hall. The event starts, the dinner starts at 5:30 tonight, and we'll be in the first floor boardroom with City of Wichita elected officials, Sedgwick County elected officials and staff, REEP, and the chamber. This is the first time that we are, all four entities are collaborating on this event together, so we'll see how it goes. Like I said, we have the social hour and networking with some heavy hors d'oeuvres at 5:30. And Chairman, at that time, we will have you and the mayor kind of give your thanks and welcome to the delegation, and we also have a, a Cargart piece of work that you can present to the legislative delegation chair. So we'll have that ready for you, just, you know, in thanks of their work this year and everything. So we'll have that ready for you to go tonight. And then at 6:30, the forum begins. So that will be in the council chambers, and that'll be a time for anyone from the public to address the legislative, legislative delegation. So that is tonight. And then on Thursday, from 12:30 PM to 5:00 PM, we have the Wichita State, the legislative annual meeting at Wichita State. The Sedgwick County portion will be at 2:30 PM that day, so it'll be a whole day of people talking about their legislative platforms, and then we come up at 2:30. There is a reception at, I believe, 3:45, so 3:45 to 5 is the reception. That's what we have for this week, and happy to answer any questions.
We're also got Government Day in, in Topeka, the 21st, is it?
22nd.
22nd.
Yes.
The BOCC meeting for that day will be canceled, as will the meeting for March 4th, because two of you will be in, coming back from Washington.
Yep.
Very good. Well, we'll be there.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Kate.
Chairman, go on this, or you guys just go ahead, you want to delay this?
Do any commissioners have anything that they need to go to right now? I know Commissioner O'Donnell went over to the city because they're talking about Delano District, so he's attending the city council meeting, but do any other commissioners have anything that we, that's pressing right now, or can we go through this northeast Sedgwick Park?
Five or 10 minutes.
Let's do it.
Go ahead.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm happy and prepared to power through this as quickly as possible. I'm Valerie Castor, Project Services Manager, and I am here today to discuss with you the recent review of property parcels that create northeast Sedgwick County Park. So there's actually two parks that are relevant for today's discussion. It's Lake Afton Park, that is in Goddard, Kansas, and it's comprised of approximately 720 acres. And then we also have northeast Sedgwick County Park, which is around 77th Street North and 127th Street East. It is over 600 acres, and it is comprised of seven parcels that are encumbered under the Land Water Conservation Act of 1965. So just to give you some history recently for what brought us to today's discussion, on July 9th, it was requested to have a discussion and short report of, of the status of northeast Sedgwick County Park. So we went over the location, the acreage, what the encumbrances meant, and what the, briefly discussed the current and potential future uses amongst the commission. It was then decided or requested that, to research the potential of transferring these encumbrances to property at Lake Afton Park for parcels that are not being fully utilized. On August 12th, a meeting was held with the Kansas Department of Wildlife Parks and Tourism, and they had already reviewed both parks and the three parcels at Lake Afton Park and the seven parcels at northeast Sedgwick County Park, and considered them to be comparable properties as far as how they're used. So the next decision was to, if we wanted to continue down this road, was to look at getting appraisals of these properties, because that's how KDWPT will review how comparable they are. It's by the appraisal value of not acre for acre. And August 16th is when we put out the request for the property appraisal review report. We went with our on-call broker, NAI Martins, and so they looked at all seven parcels at northeast Sedgwick County Park and the three at Lake Afton. So this is a, we don't need to go through all the numbers, but northeast Sedgwick County Park, 646 parcels, here they are broken out, one through seven, they're kind of funny shapes. This is 127th Street that jogs right here through them, and then you have 77th Street North running east to west there. And then these are the three parcels that were being considered at Lake Afton Park that aren't, that they're used some, but, but they could be used further. So after the review came back, the numbers, for numbers and comparison purposes, these are the three it broke down to, to being the easiest to keep the, the, because we will obviously have some park left over, and to keep the park as contiguous as possible, these are the three different separations we came up with. Parcel number seven would be the preference of Mark Straff, just based upon use and how he sees the park being used. And that was also on the list that came from NAI, NAI Martins as a suggestion. Parcel one and six combined for a trade-off for one, two, and three at Lake Afton Park, basically because six had some water running to it, it had a lot of access available, I think there's a shed on that property as well, and then one, just because of its proximity to 135, and just being the closest to paved roads.
Which, which one is the, the entrance?
Well, there's not, I mean-
Well, which one has the, the-
That's right here at number three, this little pad, you can see the little parking lot right there. Yeah, so it's right in the center. So we didn't, we didn't, we talked about these inner, inner groupings, but again, to keep the park, and you, we could do whatever was the commission's will, but we were just trying to keep the park contained as a unit, was what we were thinking. And we were looking at the different kinds of potential buyers there would be, if, if you wanted to sell the property, what kind of buyers this would be appealing to. So based upon that, that's how these different groupings came about. The other one was one in the north half of two, and again, that's just from the potential kind of buyer, if that's the route you went, and the access to these properties. If, if the commission decided it wanted to move forward with transferring this encumbrance, a discussion would obviously have to be had with KDWPT, the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Kansas Department of Wildlife Parks and Tourism, that's a hard one. And it would also need a resolution from the commission, so we'd have to put that on the agenda to move forward. There's also, it's not been discussed, but there's also the potential of having to add trails or something similar to the parcels at Lake Afton Park, so just trying to keep you fully informed that additional could be asked of us. So with the encumbrances transferred from northeast Sedgwick County Park, options for the parcels become whichever the commission deemed most appropriate, for example, sale, auction, or further park development. Lots of different things have come up. Are there any questions?
But the thing I don't see here is what the appraisal values are of those properties, because if we're going to make a decision on what we're going to do with it, we, we need to decide if it's worthwhile selling it or doing something else, and I don't know what the values of any of these different properties are.
Right, and I'd be happy to share that with you. I didn't, I didn't know if this was the appropriate forum to present those, so, but I'm, I'm happy to email them to everyone or bring them by.
Okay, well, we'd need that before we can make any decision on whether to sell, auction, further park development, whatever.
Right.
Because I have no idea what the values are.
Chairman, as Valerie said, we can speak with you privately on that. The reason that we didn't include this publicly was just because if we decide to sell or auction, we didn't want to reveal that information publicly so that, you know, it wouldn't be out there, so we would certainly-
We need that information before we can make a decision on-
Sure thing.
-what to do or what not to do.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Meister?
Valerie, so on your potential transfers, whatever, slide six.
No, I don't know how to go back.
Okay.
Yes, I can.
So was Martins part of saying this would be the best, or who said?
Um, yes. I discussed it with, is it Joshua Adams? Yeah. He was the team member who worked on this appraisal report, and, and I also reviewed it with Steve Martins on-
Steve, okay.
-on what best potentials were based on selling.
Okay, and so it's either the one at the very bottom, that whole thing?
Mm-huh.
Is that number seven, I guess, sorry?
He was suggesting seven, but potentially splitting it.
And then the far, the far east and west?
Mm-huh.
And then the far west with part of two?
Right.
Or whatever it is, yeah, north half. Okay, tell me, or Tim, maybe you know, who all, which parcels are the ones that, that are kind of horse-protected?
Equine-friendly.
Not even protected, equine-friendly. It's a good, good term.
Three, two and three are-
Two and three.
The other one, seven is also-
Seven is also more interesting for riders because it's got more trees, it's more wooded, but that's also kind of isolated from the rest of the park if we were to maintain part of that property as park property.
And can we also determine, Valerie, we could have a conversation, but what, I need, what parcels have closest access to water or utilities or whatever? I mean, we, we don't have to do that now, we can visit about some of that.
We can go through the appraisal report, and it's actually written on every single parcel appraisal.
Yeah. Well, it's too bad- Yeah, well, it's too bad they wouldn't allow us to just flip the whole thing, but...
Yeah.
Can we appeal to get some more?
I'm not sure, we can always try, but I think it's... I think it's based... it's pretty consistently based on appraisal value to appraisal value, yeah.
So, it's not acre to acre?
It is not acre to acre.
And there's... can we move it on to the lake at Lake Afton and have that appraised? It's a body of water? Just a thought.
Have we exhausted everything at the federal level to see if we can just get this thing, what, eliminated, moved, without... Trying to sell anything? The slickest thing would be if we could get rid of this encumbrance, because the whole thing... somehow, we've got to get the logic of this thing to the federal government, that, hey, it started off as the corner of Ridge and 21st, that little corner. And then it moved a huge piece of property up at the old Coliseum, and now it's 600 and some acres. The whole thing is just beyond my mind that we would tie up taxpayers' resources because of a little piece of property up here at Ridge and 21st. It's mind-boggling that we've gotten ourselves to this point.
And in terms of what we've done, you know, in terms of what we've attempted, the county has at the federal level, I mean, as you're aware, a couple of years ago, we passed a resolution requesting them to lift the restrictions on this. And I know that Representative Estes and his staff had looked into this and inquired into it. Their feedback was essentially that they don't think there's any chance that legislation like that would pass. Also, I know that the county had... I've heard the gentleman's name, but the federal lobbyist who's assisting the county on some matters, this had been run by him, and I think he believed it wasn't realistic that for any federal legislation to lift these types of restrictions there. But, you know, certainly, if the guidance of the county commission is to do something further, we could look into that, so.
What's the purpose of the... like, what is an encumbrance? It's to protect the land, so that it's...
I think the purpose is to not have a reduction in park use... park availability and usage. I mean, to the chairman's point, there's been a huge expansion in acreage. And so, that's, I think, the point the chairman's making. But I think the point behind that federal law is when federal money's gone to acquire land for parks, develop parks, they didn't want to see a reduction then at some point in the parks. And that's really, when Valerie's talking about what the state does in analyzing these, because they do it on behalf of the Secretary of the Interior, they don't want to see a net reduction in park usage. And these parcels at Lake Afton aren't really utilized into the... incorporated into the park, and they're not subject to the restrictions right now. And what we're saying is, well, if we did this, if we wanted to go forward with this, we'd be saying, well, we'd be bolstering Lake Afton Park. We just, you know, under all the scenarios that Valerie presented, if you do that, you'd still have a northeast Cedric County Park, it'd just be smaller. Be 400 and some acres roughly, I think. But those are kind of the... I think the whole aim of the statute and the act is to preserve federal parkland, or not federal parklands, but parklands where federal money has been utilized to develop them.
I don't have a problem with that, but going from 20 acres to 600 and some acres is just absolutely ridiculous that we got ourselves into this box.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. So, if we decide to swap some of this land, it doesn't mean there won't be cost to the county. In fact, I would say if we sell the land at auction and we buy other land, even though it's of similar value, that's by the... an appraiser, I assume?
No, we're not buying other land.
Well, if we... yeah, we swap land, we have to...
We swap, but with land we already own.
Land we already own, yeah.
Okay, we already own, thank you, that helps. That helps very much. If we don't get the encumbrance lifted, then it sounds like, even if we did swap the land, we're still going to be stuck with quite a bit of land out there at northeast Cedric County Park, no matter what happens.
Yeah.
If we don't swap the land, we ought to be talking about potentially selling some of these parcels out there to LAP, is that correct, or no?
We can't sell them.
They're not encumbered. They would become encumbered.
Why would we want to sell them?
I'm just saying, if they're not... I don't know how, for example, parcel one, I don't know how well that's being utilized right now, I don't think it's being utilized at all.
At Lake Afton Park?
At Lake Afton Park. The far left.
Well, I think they're all minorly utilized. Do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I know we use number three a little bit for some... people do some running perhaps, but I think number one is mostly not utilized, but please explain that to me.
Sheriff, Glory Commissioner Mark Shroff, Park Superintendent. Of the three properties you listed, the one that makes the most sense, if you're going to sell, would be property number two. That was that buffer property that was bought on the east side of the lake that was in farm production at the time. Right now, it's in grass, weeds, and trees. One and three, of course, with the addition of the JRBR recreation area, those could become utilized more. You are correct, number three, they have the cross-country paths cut down through there that multiple schools use for cross-country meets every year.
And they could do cross-country also at northeast Cedric County Park, I would think.
They could.
So, I guess I just see that they're... it's similar land. I just... we have the option of... we can't sell northeast Cedric County Park, because it is encumbered, but number three's not. We could do whatever we want with number three. Just a thought. Right? I would say, you know, to the extent it actually is encumbered, unless we swap lands, and I think, I don't know how much that makes sense. I do like the idea that we have similar recreational opportunities on both sides of the county. Just a thought. And if we were going to use... if we're stuck with northeast Cedric County Park, and if that's the... if that's what this discussion's really about, if we're stuck with all of it or part of it, then at some point, we ought to be talking about how to make that more interesting to the public that we serve. And just some thoughts, are we allowed to... it sounds like it has to reside in recreation, but are we allowed to put improvements on the property, as long as it's tied to recreation?
Yes.
Bathrooms and gift shops, or...
Yes.
Whatever we want to do out there, okay.
There's a whole... there's a long list of rules, but yes, there's a lot of improvements we can make to the property.
So, just throwing out some thoughts out there, I mean, we could do anything, and I can see maybe multiple uses out there, because it's a very large piece of property. Throwing out some ideas, you know, motorcycles and four-wheelers could have a spot in Cedric County. Firing range, we saw one in Butler County recently that I thought was tremendous. We would... I would love to see something like that out in the country, that we would... again, if you're talking about quality of life in Cedric County, a firing range would be wonderful. A drone park, an RC park, a dog park, a bicycle park, those are all things that, in my opinion, we ought to say, at some point, we have to cross the threshold and say, we're going to make this a high-quality-of-life asset for the people that own this. We've done the same thing at Cedric County Park and Lake Afton, you know, to the extent we are encumbered, at some point, we need to have that discussion. But I do think there's a way to sell off a part of the property. Again, number three is very much like number... is very much like northeast Cedric County Park. I don't think number one... please, Mark, please tell me again, how much is number one being used right now?
Minimally.
Yeah, see, and I don't know... I'm not sure that that would be... again, it's available to be used right now, I believe, number one, but it's not hardly used at all. So, I guess I'm wondering, since we... if you want to, you know, put money back in the taxpayers' pockets, or use that money for mental health, or whatever, one and three potentially, and it sounds like even number two, aren't really being used much, if at all, and we have the options of selling lands, reinvesting the money, other places more important to Cedric County taxpayers. So, I think it's a great discussion, but I think we do have options. And although I think swapping lands doesn't necessarily make... I guess it does make some sense, but I'm not sure it's the only option we have here today.
If I could make one comment on partial seven up at northeast Cedric County Park, since we took possession of that, I've been able to get through that heavily wooded area one time to cut a path. It stays so wet down through there, and it's very difficult to get equipment down through there. So, there was a path cut two years ago, and we haven't been able to get back in there since, because it's just so thick and so wet in there. So, that kind of makes sense to me, if you're going to trade one, seven would be the one to trade.
Is there any walk-in hunting area opportunities for this land?
It's currently posted, no hunting allowed.
I know it is currently, but let me say, is it legal for us to allow walk-in hunting?
If we change the encumbrance with that? I don't know, I'm asking.
It is encumbered currently, so are we allowed to use that as one of the options? We could, you know, use it as recreation.
I'd have to look into that.
So, if it's a private land, say, we did lift the encumbrance, we sold this to a private person, they could do whatever they wanted on their own land. I mean, my mother and father-in-law, they have 80 acres, and that's where they hunt. I mean, this is Kansas, people love that kind of stuff. So, in my opinion, you know, I think it makes more sense... I mean, what's the populate... or what's the visitation of this park versus this park? How many visitors do we get here compared to there? Do you have rough estimates?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
At Lake Afton, we have about 300,000 every year.
Okay.
And up in northeast Cedric County Park, if I had to guess, maybe 100?
100 people?
Per year.
Compared to 300,000 people?
Yeah.
So, it... in my mind, and in my opinion, it makes more sense to build upon something that you already have, new attractions, those kinds of things. It's easier to get more people to go here than to figure out what to do with this. So, I am of the opinion, and at first, I was like, let's keep it, let's put solar panels, y'all know what I've wanted to do, but I'm just saying, I think it makes more sense to move an encumbrance, get somebody to buy this property over here, and then bolster this over there. I mean, that, to me, makes the most sense. I mean, when you're talking about visitors, when you're talking about building attractions. The one thing that I do want to know, though, is how much it would cost if we did move to put in trails, put in those things that you mentioned that we would have to do if we move the encumbrance. So, I think that that's something, in addition to property values over here, I think that that's important to know, but y'all know how I feel.
Very good. Well, I'll echo Commissioner Cruz's comments. Lake Afton is a park that is utilized. Selling off parts of a park that's utilized, that can be expanded in the future, doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. I wouldn't sell one, two, or three. The other park, all I'm trying to do is, we've got over a million dollars of taxpayers' money sitting out there that 100 people a year use, and it's ridiculous. So, we... I don't know. We've got to get rid of that encumbrance somehow, so we can figure out something we can do with that. But right now, the options don't solve the problem. So, I'd like to... for my own edification, know what appraised values are, but it doesn't solve the problem. We still have a whole huge piece of property out there that's worth a lot of money that we can't do a dang thing with, when it's all said and done.
Just to make sure I understand, so, these are three different options. You could sell off one and six and pay... and reincumber one, two, and three on Lake Afton Park, for example. That's an option.
Those would all be in a trade for the one, two, and three on Lake Afton?
I'm not against the idea, but again, if we can't get rid of the encumbrance, again, I think we've tried, and we can continue to try, and I'm all for that, too, okay? At some point, when we realize that's not going to happen, if that's where we end up. The reason that the visitation out there is so low is because there's nothing out there. The only people who go out there and use it at all are people... I saw videos of people running, which I think was staged, but that's fine. People primarily use it for horses somewhat, and it's not very much. Number one, people don't even know about it also. We've not... you know, we've stepped up our communications a little bit on this, but people don't know about this. I go to community groups and ask, you know, what about quality of life? And this never comes up unless I bring it up. So, people don't know about it, there's nothing out there for them to do. So, once again, if we're stuck with this, even if you wanted to swap the lands, okay, let's do that, potentially, you're still stuck with the majority of northeast Cedric County Park. And unless you add something out there for people to do, they're not going to show up. So, we ought to have the discussion about how do you put in the, you know, running paths, bicycle paths, dog park, bicycle, you know, walk-in hunting, drone park, there's all kinds of things we can do out there, that would draw people out there in huge numbers, once those things are out there and people begin to know about it. So, at some point, we're stuck with it. When we finally realize that's the truth, if that's where we end up, then we ought to be having those other discussions. So, I'm okay with a swap, but we're not going to swap all the land, it's not going to happen. And I guess, based on the three options, I would rather see us swap out one and six, because the rest of those parcels are centrally located to that parking lot, and I think that's... if we're going to swap anything, I'd say one and six for the other three, that'd be fine with me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, but we also have to be realistic. We can do all kinds of improvements out there. That firing range out in Butler County costs over a million dollars to put in. And so, are we going to cut comp care, are we going to cut EMS, are we going to cut... what have we got to cut to put over a million dollars just for one project?
I'm not suggesting we charge, we use property tax dollars for that. There's all kinds of financing schemes, maybe user fees would pay for that, potentially. There's... there are... we ought to have the discussions about ways that that can be paid for. Maybe we find some private investment.
Could I... could I...
Sure.
Can I just... so, if we, like, we're using for horse trails, those kinds of things, would there be an opportunity, once we've communicated? I agree, we do need to do a little bit better job communicating what's out there availability, but the list of things that we could put out there, could we have that discussion? Because I don't even know what you can do. But could you bolster, like, why I discussed bolstering Lake Afton Park, could we just build upon who's already using it? Is there a nonprofit? Is there somebody who might, you know, I don't know, do something with it that we could help or we could partner with?
Sure, and we can organize all that information for you. I think Justin had, in a previous presentation, put a bunch of things, so we can pull that list out again and see what's already working and come up with new ideas, so.
Cool.
Very good. Any other questions?
Just a final comment, we are spending property tax dollars for all of our other parks. And again, we invest in quality of life in Cedric County, and I support that strongly. If we decide to... if we decide to invest a little bit on the other side of the county, I don't think it's necessarily out of line. No matter what we do, at either one of these locations, it's going to cost some dollars for us to utilize these lands. Sitting still doing nothing, in my opinion, is the worst option. We ought to aggressively do whatever we're going to do here, but let's move on. Unless we find... unless we think removing the encumbrance is a reality that is ever going to come, then we ought to move forward.
Very good.
I just have, sorry, one more question. So, would there be any possibility... are there any grants or anything that helps? I mean, have we looked into that, surely we have, possibly? I mean, are we actively seeking those out? Would there be any additional monies that we could get to do this? I don't know, that's why I'm asking the question.
Lots of different options and things that we could look... The last clear directive that we had from the commission was to not spend any additional money at northeast Cedric County Park. And then, for the last few years, we've kind of been in this holding pattern, trying to get those encumbrances lifted, so that we could determine if there was something else that we could do with it. If we get a directive to pursue opportunities to develop that land, or develop the land, further develop land out of Lake Afton, we can certainly do that. We could do an RFI and see if there are other partners out in the area that would be interested in doing something at northeast... there's lots of different options that we could pursue.
So, what's the cost of looking for grants, though?
There is no real cost to doing that, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
But in the past, we haven't been, I don't think, in a position where even we would have been able to accept a grant. I don't know that there was will to do work out there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we're in very high-speed hold.
Well, yeah. A couple of things, I think we ought to engage our federal lobbyist on two counts. One, to just make sure that we have done everything we can to try to remove these encumbrances, and that includes talking to Estes or Moran, or whoever we need to talk to. The second thing we can engage him to do is to seek out federal grants for park development improvement. So, we engage him on two fronts. Tanya will be around to talk with each of you about the appraisal dollar values on this, and we still would like some kind of guidance, and after you hear the numbers, you can give us some kind of guidance on whether we want to move through with the swap or not. And whether we do or not, to Commissioner Howe's point, we're going to have some land left up here in northeast Park, unless Jim can do something federally for us. And then, finally, for the budget process, which is just right around the corner, and I'm glad Tim mentioned the RFI. If you guys want to aggressively do something with all or a portion of northeast Cedric County Park, we could throw out an RFI, we could look for... Mark can develop decision packages on what it would cost to put bike paths or ATV paths, or whatever we want to do out there. He could build scenarios for you, and we could present that in a budget setting to where you can weigh that up with all the other competing interests within the county. We could aggressively do something like that for the 21 budget. So, let's go one step at a time, we'll engage Davenport. Tanya, we'll come and talk to you, and then we'll retalk about it again.
Okay.
While we have time.
All right, nothing else? Commissioners? I'm sad to say that last night, Lisa Corr's mother did pass away. We had a little miscommunication between Carol and I on the other day on whether or not she passed away, but she did pass away last night. It looks like the funeral's going to be Friday. We have a number of things going on on Friday. The last funeral for her father was out near Pratt, so I would imagine that that's the same place that the funeral for her mother will be. If we attend, I know I've got GWP meeting in the morning, we got K96 meeting at lunchtime, so there's some things that we're probably going to have to take a look at for our schedule if we attend a funeral, but want to make sure that we pass on our deepest condolences to Lisa and her family, and keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Along a little different track, I think everybody is aware that our treasurer went into... Along a little different track, I think everybody is aware that, that our treasurer went into surgery yesterday, the surgery lasted a good part of the afternoon. She's going to be in ICU for about two weeks now, then going to be in some still care in the hospital for a week following that, and then another couple of weeks of, of recovery back here, it sounds like. So, please keep Lynda Kazire and your thoughts and prayers, and hopefully, everything goes well with her. So, that was sort of some personal issues that we need to make sure that we take care of, and take care of our family here in Cedric County. So, any electeds have anything today? Appointees? Any staff have anything today? Very good, all right, about an hour and a half, we'll go to work.